Meeting, uh, the Hammond Cameron Council to order for June twenty second, twenty twenty, item number one.
To the flag of the United States of America. Republic, for which it stands. Liberty and justice for all.
Trainee, do you want to do the prayer?
Sure. Eternal God, our Father, Lord, we come again saying thank you, God. Thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our officials, Lord God. Lord God, continue to cover each and every person that is suffering with the coronavirus right now, Lord God. Cover their families. Lord God, even those that have died, Lord God, cover their families right now. Lord, we thank you for all the things that you will be continuing to do in this city. Lord God, that we will continue to unify in one body, that we will continue to be who we are called to be in this city, Lord. We thank you on all these things. We do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Time roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Petali. Vines. Hellwinski. Hellwinski. Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson. Emerson. Raycos. Whorple.
Here. Let the record show, eight present, one absent. Item number three, reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali. There are second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines, to accept the minutes and place on file. All those in favor signify by signing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, proof of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
Motion approved. Claims dated six eleven, twenty twenty, and ending with claims dated six seventeen, twenty twenty. Claim number twenty six forty nine through claim twenty nine forty eight inclusive, in the amount of forty two million, four hundred seventy four thousand, two hundred ninety nine dollars and love themselves.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the claims by Councilman Raycos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. To approve the claims as stated, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Time roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Petali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Hellwinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Emerson. Raycos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Item number five, public hearings.
Okay.
Twenty oh nine, appropriating the proceeds of the CARES Act and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditures of the coronavirus aid relief and economic
Hear me?
Act, CARES Act program.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on twenty oh nine? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on twenty oh nine? Is there anyone here wishes to speak on twenty oh nine? Hearing and seeing no one on Zoom, um, public hearings are closed.
Yep. Okay.
Item number six, communications. Is there any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
Received, uh, email correspondence from a couple of in my district and another one in my district. Seems to be a form letter, but I wanted that to go on the record. Dear Councilmember Raycos, dear sir or madam, I'm reaching out to your office as one of your local constituents with a very important issue. I want you to know that I stand a hundred percent with my local police officers. I do not want to see any budget cuts to their department. Our police officers are not perfect, but I know that the Massandoria Police Officers put their lives on the line to protect us. Do not cut their budget or punish them because of the tragedy that took place in Indianapolis. We need to work with our local police department to improve their practices, not defund them. Defend the police, don't defund them. My response to them was there's no plan to defund the Hammond Police Department. I follow the service of the city. As a police officer for thirty six years, tonight's council meeting includes an ordinance to take, to take temporary loans out to supplement our budget losses due to COVID nineteen pandemic. I hope you and other taxpayers support this to help maintain our police fire and other city budgets. Thank you.
Is there any other, anybody wish anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I have several. Just want to announce that the Hammond Parks and Recreation Department, along with the Hammond Police Department, and with, uh, the guidance of Mayor McDermott, are happy to announce the return of safety village classes for children in Hammond's miniature village in Winwood Park, behind the Hammond Civic Center, fifty eight twenty five South Soul Avenue. The classes are free and will not be, and will be held on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from ten AM to two PM from June fifteenth until August seventh. And those classes are, uh, like I said, free and open to all Lake County children and will be taught by officers from the Hammond Police Department. It will feature neighborhood and traffic safety, along with videos on bicycle safety. I know parents are looking for things for their students to do this summer, so that could be something to kind of keep your child's attention. Uh, the second announcement communication I have is from the Hammond Human Relations Commission. Their next meeting will take place on Wednesday, June twenty fourth, from at four thirty PM, uh, and that will take place via Zoom. And then the last announcement I have is from the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. Uh, they are hosting their food bank, uh, across all of Northwest Indiana with, uh, with locations in Maryville, Valpo, Highland, Whiting. Uh, and then the last one will be taking place on Tuesday, June thirtieth, uh, seventy forty seven Grand Avenue in Hammond. That is the USW Local One Hundred. Uh, if you want more information, you can visit the, uh, Food Bank, Food Bank's website at foodbanknwi.org backslash market. Once again, that's foodbanknwi.org backslash market. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Is there any further communications? Are there any further communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I'm not sure if this would go under communications or new, new and unfinished, um, a COVID update. Would it go under communications or, um, new and unfinished?
Whichever you might.
Okay, well, then I'll do it under, um, communications. Um, as of today, uh, we have eight hundred and thirty-three positive cases in the city of Hammond with nineteen deaths. Um, this number is almost doubled from last month on, um, February, on Ju-, uh, May eighteenth, where we had four hundred and ninety cases with fifteen deaths. Um, as the weather is continuing to warm up and families want to get together and go to restaurants and stores, I just want to personally remind our residents to continue to mask up, continue to use hand sanitizer, and stay safe as we are still fighting this pandemic. It's not over yet.
Say it.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any further communications? Is there any further communications? Communications are now closed. Item number seven, committee reports.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Council's a hope we bring it on twenty dash oh nine.
Thank you, Councilman Spitali. Is there any further committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, due to, uh, the current situation, the crime watch groups have not, uh, been meeting. We did have a virtual meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I do believe that, uh, we're going to be looking into, thank you very much. Uh, we will be looking into, uh, doing another virtual meeting because, uh, we're unable to, uh, use the facilities that we have in the past for our crime watch meetings. Uh, at this point, Mount Zion, Pleasant View Plaza, uh, Silver Birch, and, um, Golden Manor Senior Apartments, uh, will not be available for, uh, any of us to get in to meet with the seniors. A, the Ophelia Steen Center is not going to open until September for meetings, and that is where the East Hammond, uh, Pullman Crime Watch Meeting, uh, group meets. Uh, Edison Community Watch and Urban Community Watch, both, uh, and Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch, uh, all meet at schools, and, uh, they are not going to make their facilities available to, uh, outside meetings. So, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with that. I do know that Harrison Park Crime Watch, uh, has gotten a go-ahead from the VFW, and they will be scheduling a meeting soon. The Hessville Crime Watch will meet on July sixteenth. That will be at the Gene Shepherd Center at seven PM. Plasty Park Neighborhood Association has not heard from the American Legion just yet, so they're not sure of the future of, uh, those meetings. South Hammond Crime Watch will be able to meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building, and the announcement, uh, will be made shortly as to when they will resume their meetings. And the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet at Trinity Lutheran Church on September twenty fourth. So, that is the update that I have for you on the, uh, the crime watch meetings and the community watch meetings. We never expected this situation to continue as long as, as it has, and quite honestly, we weren't prepared for alternate meetings. Uh, I think that, uh, as I said earlier, we'll probably schedule a, uh, another virtual meeting in the not-too-distant future, so we can keep all of our residents informed. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Are there any other committee reports? I have two. Finance Committee will be reporting out ordinance, not reporting out, but introducing ordinance twenty ten tonight. Um, it'll be explained by title. It's basically a tax anticipation warrant, um, because of the delay in the property tax collections, and, um, it'll be coming for us tonight on first and second reading. And also parks, um, my committee report from the parks is that, um, the twenty nineteen projects were twenty nineteen dollars were allocated. Um, those projects are beginning to move forward, I believe. Um, I was told that they're back to work on your park over there.
Mr. Chairman, I applied. I haven't been confirmed by the board of workers.
Okay. But, uh, I know that as far as Dowland Park went, there was fish order and all that stuff, so that, as long as there's twenty nineteen gaming dollars available, our projects in parks will move forward. Um, my understanding, I'm broke, so I'm not going to move that much more forward, so. Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Number eight, ordinance third and final passage.
Twenty oh nine, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the CARES Act and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditures of the coronavirus aid relief and economic securities act, CARE Act program.
Sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
President, moving to final passage of twenty dash zero nine.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of ordinance twenty oh nine by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Raycos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Any questions to be answered? We have Ann Anderson here and Iman Miller.
Well, it's my understanding, as we discussed in the committee hearing, that this ordinance is for, and you want to come up and explain. One point eight nine million from the federal government for the CARES Act.
That's right, Councilman, Council President. So, the city of Hammond will be receiving one point eight nine million, um, from federal dollars through HUD, COVID CARES Act. Um, of that one point eight nine, six hundred and thirty-five thousand will be going to ESG funds for sheltering. Four shelters will be receiving that money, along with some admin fees, and also one point two seven million of that will be going to CDBG, um, COVID CARES funds, and six recipients will be receiving that fund. And of those six, the Economic Development Department here in the city of Hammond has created a small business resili- resiliency program to help for-profit businesses in Hammond get through this pandemic just fine.
And as it was discussed in the hearing we had before the meeting, this approximately pertains to, uh, one hundred and fifty businesses in Hammond?
To date, a hundred and fifteen businesses have applied for this smaller, uh, business resiliency program. The deadline is this Friday, and we are feeling that we will be getting smart locations, yes.
And that's the small business portion of it, correct?
That's correct. Fifty employees or less will be a small business for-profit in Hammond.
Does anybody have any questions for the small business portion of it? No. Um, Owen, can you speak as far as the CDBG department?
A portion, a portion of the funds will go to Mental Health America slash Parents' Teachers, Hammond Legal Aid, as well as Hammond We Care From The Heart, and Meals On Wheels. Anne mentioned the six hundred and, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars for Emergency Solutions Grant. Those will go to First Baptist Church, for the Rescue Mission, Claude Street Shelter, Continuum of Care, Greater Hammond, and for some admin dollars.
Any questions on that? Questions on that?
How many, Mr. Chairman?
The Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. How many businesses will be getting this grant?
It's a hundred and fifteen.
That's what applied. Are they all going to get it?
Well, that, that's what applied, um, up until, what'd you say, Friday? You want to go ahead and finish the answer, Anne? Let the record show that Councilman Kowinski is here too, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck. For the small business program is this Friday. Um, as of today, um, we have a hundred and fifteen applications in our possession. We are going through those applications one by one and making sure that they fit all the criteria. And then we will take the funds available that we have through the HUD dollars and allocate them out to each of the approved applications.
I see. So, how many are approved so far?
Um, at this point, we haven't made approvals or not approvals yet. We're just working through what we have now. We're waiting for the deadline to cut, um, stop the program, and then we'll have a finite number of applications. Then once that's received, we're going to go through each, each application and make sure they fit all the criteria. So, we haven't made the approvals or the denials at this point yet.
And, and, and does CDBG mandate a certain percentage go to minority businesses?
Um, all minority businesses are available to apply for this. They have to serve a low to moderate, um, area in Hammond. And they check that off during the application to show us what areas they serve.
All right. So, regarding the requirements from the CDBG, is there a certain percentage we're supposed to try to meet regarding giving it to minority businesses?
No, there isn't a percentage that we have to meet in regards to the owner of the business. It's, it's who their customer, who they serve. Their customer base has to be a low to moderate area in Hammond.
I see. And for all these organizations that we're giving dollars to, how do we make sure that those dollars we're giving them are being spent on Hammond residents?
Councilman, um, each one of these organizations that we're dealing with are the main ones that we deal with on a yearly basis. Um, they do know that with their process, they have to serve Hammond businesses. Greater Hammond Community Services, they receive funding from East Chicago as well as the state, um, but everything for Hammond is earmarked for Hammond.
So, will you be tracking that to make sure those dollars stay with Hammond residents or in Hammond?
Yes, sir. We definitely do a monitoring once a month, and when they submit their invoices, we make sure that everything is in place before the invoice comes before you.
If the, if the money doesn't go to Hammond residents, what, what, uh, what is your recourse?
Well, in my, my line of work, they have to go to Hammond businesses. If, um, they don't, then the bill won't get paid.
Okay. And for the agencies that serve people in the area, even outside of Hammond, what if those dollars go to people outside of Hammond?
Those, um, as I said, Greater Hammond is one of the agencies that receive funding outside of Hammond. They receive funds from East Chicago. They receive funds from the state, um, to cover statewide. Um, so right now, the only thing that we are definitely concerned about is the Hammond residents. And like I said, we monitor very closely those agencies when they submit their invoices to us, make sure that they, um, are serving Hammond residents.
All right.
Owana, this whole thing, as federal guidelines, it has to be met too, correct?
Yes.
This is part of that CARES Act that was passed by Congress, correct?
Exactly.
There's also federal guidelines we have to follow with this ordinance.
Right. And these agencies that I deal with, they all understand that, and they know our guideline, as well as the federal government guideline.
Is there any further discussion?
President.
Mr. Chairman.
Is it Councilman Emerson or Councilman Kowinski? Which one's the Mr. President?
I did, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to say. Yeah. I am short on volume. I wonder if Chris or Jake can do something about volume. I have it full up, and I having a hard time hearing. Might just be my old ears, but if they can tune it up, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I have here that, and, and this is for Owana, I think, uh, small businesses get nine hundred thousand, or, or those, I'm guessing, obviously are Hammond businesses?
Yes.
Okay. And there, are there special qualifications for that?
Hi, Councilman, it's Anne again. Yes, the qualifications, um, for a business to apply for the small business resiliency program, they have to be a for-profit business in Hammond with fifty or less employees that show, um, a definite loss in profit due to the pandemic. And they have to serve low to moderate, um, areas in Hammond.
Is there any further questions, discussion?
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to, to go back to a question that, uh, Councilman Hellwinski asked. I think, uh, Councilman Hellwinski, what you were getting at is, uh, if there are checks and balances in place to kind of stop these organizations from spending this money on residents outside of Hammond. And Owana, it sounds like, uh, they have to put in a request specifically on how they'll use that money, and then give you receipts on how they have spent that money before, uh, it's either, it sounds like it might be reimbursement basis, or it's like on a case-by-case basis. Can you kind of, just kind of share more information about that?
Yes, it's definitely on a reimbursement basis. Um, we have an application that each organization has to submit to us, and then that application is put together and presented to the Department of Housing and Urban Development in Indianapolis. Once it's approved, then we can definitely work with each organization. Each organization has a application that we have to review as to what they're asking. And because of the federal guidelines, we have to make sure that they're asking and requesting the proper documentation from each, um, individual person. So, we definitely have a number of checks and balances with our, our programs.
Got it. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like we were giving them this large sum of money and just expected them to spend it on what they say they would spend it for. It's, it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Yes.
Is there any further questions? But before anybody says anything, when you're on Zoom, can you speak just a little slower? Because there's like an echo in here, so your words are blending together. I'm not saying like speed, like echo, but just a little bit slower.
Okay.
There you go. Is there any other discussion? Or any other discussion? Time and roll call.
Alexander. Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines, yes. Hellwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Includes the reading on the passage of, final passage of ordinances. Item nine, introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance twenty ten, an ordinance authorizing the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the General Fund and Park and Recreation Fund, and in anticipation of the current taxes levied in the year twenty nineteen and collectible in the year twenty twenty, estimated to be received on or before December thirty first, twenty twenty. Authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Hammond's Local Public Improvement Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And move for first and second reading of twenty dash ten, with a, a, uh, committee meeting on July thirteenth at five fifteen PM, and that would be, uh, with the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made on ordinance twenty dash ten for first and second reading with a committee meeting on July thirteenth, five fifteen. The motion was made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Raycos at five fifteen. The meeting committee hearing is finance. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this is an advance on tax collections, uh, based on twenty nineteen, uh, taxes that were collected, uh, for this period of time. The, um, the request for the tax draw from the bond bank is approximately eighty percent of the taxes that were collected. is approximately 80% of the taxes that were collected in this same timeframe in 2019 with an interest rate of not more than 5%. It will be repaid before the end of the year. The amount that we're looking at is for the General Fund, And for Parks and Recreation Fund, For a total of $12,634,000 with an approximate interest of $316,000.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
That $2.198 million for Parks and Rec sounds like my bond money for the first district. Is that what it's replacing?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I couldn't understand.
He said that the $2.1 million for the parks seemed like a lot. And is that the amount we're replacing?
If I could ask our controller to come to the podium, please. Pete, you're requesting that we suspend the rules. So our controller can speak to the issue.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules. All those, or do we need a roll call? Is all those in favor? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Yep.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
No.
Whorple?
Yes, motion's been made to suspend the rules to allow. Megan, just big, eight in favor, one opposed. Megan?
Weird question, Councilman. No, that is not your park fund dollars. Those are actually two separate things. So the way in which these amounts are totaled is we took the cash flows month by month from 2019. We based the percentages collected and expended month by month and took those percentages and projected out for the remainder of 2020. And then we tweaked with the property tax collections and the timeliness and the overall collection rate. So we decreased the collection rate by 12% in comparison to what we received last year. And we also are anticipating a draw in August. So our draw in May was actually 40% less than what it was last year in May. So we are going to see some deficits. And for these two funds, the General Fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund, these are the deficits projected based on timeliness of property taxes. It has nothing to do with the park fund dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, City Controller.
I want to take a motion to go back to regular order of business.
I make that motion.
Been made by Councilman Raycos, seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Time and roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali? Spitali? Vines?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Whorple?
Yes. Councilman Spitali, motion. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed, to return to regular order of business. The motion has been made for. First and. Motion's been made for first and second reading. July 13 at 5:15 p.m. Finance meeting. Is there? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. I continue, resolution.
20R12, a resolution of the Hammond City Council approving certain forms CF1s as filed with the Hammond Common Council of the city of Hammond as a designating body by applicants previously approved for economic revitalization, area reductions, from assessed value pursuant to Indiana code.
Sponsored by Economic Development and Councilman Tyler.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for a passage, our approval of Resolution 20R12.
Councilman Tyler made a motion to approve 20R12, seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just wanted to clarify what this resolution is in connection to. It is for the approval of these six CFA1 forms, which we have received from six companies across the city of Hammond who have received tax abatements. This form is just to make sure that they are in compliant with all of the aspects of their original application. And as of right now, all six of those companies are in compliance.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Are all of the tax abatement companies on board? Are there any that did not submit a CF1 for this year?
Hi, Councilman. It's Ann Anderson, Director of Economic Development. No, all six companies submitted their CF1 to us and county on time this year.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Time and roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Whorple?
Yes. Let the record show the Resolution 20R12 passes nine in favor, zero opposed. That being the only resolution, resolutions are now closed. Item number 11, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
The celebration of the independence of our country is coming up on July 4. And everyone likes to celebrate that independence. Most often, it's with fireworks. In the state of Indiana, it is illegal to shoot off fireworks except within a specific window of time. That being between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and two hours after sunset on June, beginning June 29, continuing on June 30, July 1, July 2, July 3, July 5, July 6, July 7, July 8, and July 9. On July 4, you can shoot off fireworks between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight. I would like to point out that today is Monday, June 22. For the past week, I've been receiving phone calls about fireworks that are being shot off. It's, I think it would be tolerable if, number one, we didn't feel like we were in a war zone. And number two, if the celebrations stop at a reasonable time. But going until midnight is just, it's disrespectful to your neighbors. It's very difficult for us as councilpeople to track where these fireworks are being shot off. And it's equally as difficult for the police to follow the smoke in the neighborhood, particularly after dark. If you know the address of where the fireworks are being shot off, by all means, call the police department and they will go and address the issue with the resident. But it's just very difficult to track where all of these explosives are coming from. So I can only ask for your tolerance during this time. And if you do know where the fireworks are being shot off from, by all means, call the police department and they would be happy to visit that resident. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I want to piggyback on what Councilwoman Vines is speaking about. I have been getting calls from combat veterans with post-traumatic stress who won't come out of their house during all the banging that's going on right now. I've had calls from people with medical conditions for which this is troublesome, all the noise that is occurring. I've had people with children who have special needs giving me a call about what are we doing to enforce the law? And I've had people with pets calling me about this issue. This is a far-reaching issue that has really gotten out of hand, not only in Hammond, but I believe across the country. And I'll be presenting an ordinance down the road to make sure that people in Hammond are clear about the dates and that fireworks stores are clear about the dates and handing out those dates and asking the police to fully enforce and maybe even put more time, overtime into finding the people who are setting these off against the law in the timeframe that isn't allowed. This has become a hardship on special needs populations and on the quality of life for most Hammond residents. I was in Washington DC for the better part of, for the last six weeks. It's not different there either. But I think now it's become in Indiana, this law that seems unenforceable. And somehow, we will have to get our hands around it to put some bite into the 12 days of the year that are allowed for fireworks and the other 300-plus days that are not. So I just wanted to give out that warning, if you will. And something that will be coming up is some, some work on creating an ordinance to help us get control of this in the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kowinski. All I can say is it sounds like a war zone for the last month in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree.
It's coming from 15 different directions. And I have three doors down from me, a Vietnam veteran that suffers from PTSD. And I can count on three or four calls a year from them. And it's kind of frustrating when there's not a whole thing you can do about it. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
I mean, I'm going to just piggyback, Mr. Chairman. That I know even around in the third district area and just all over the city are having this issue. And I have received a couple of calls myself regarding that. As we know that we do have the ordinance, so I guess the real question is outside of us, putting in another ordinance, how are we going to enforce what's already there? What is it that we're going to do to put in place with the things that are there to make sure that our residents even know? Because maybe they just don't remember. So how can we go about creating a way for them to understand that it is wrong during a certain season, a certain part of the time? You know, we have some people that'll say, you know what, it's fireworks. We can buy fireworks all times of year. Just because you can buy something doesn't mean that it's okay to go off all the time or even after certain hours. I think even with Councilwoman Vines, she said that if it was even in a reasonable amount of time, but when it's 12 o'clock where people are going to sleep and they're constantly hearing these big booms all night, that's where we have to kind of put something in place.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yes, I have a few things I would like to report out on. As connected to our youth committee, I had a conversation with Superintendent Scott Miller last week. And he and I would like for him to be able to come to city council meetings and report out on important topics that are affecting the youth across our city as well as things that have connection to do with our civil city. I told him I would bring it to the rest of you so that we can discuss how that would fit into an agenda. And he would give us, of course, like notice beforehand in terms of when he would want to, to speak at which meeting. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm also in communication with representatives from our police department, given all the civil unrest and challenges that we're facing as a country. We are kind of diving back into several of the things that the Hammond Police Department has put in place to build stronger relationships across all of our city with, with all types of residents. And so we're going to be releasing more information about some of those things connected to our police and fire committee as well. And just the good work that our Hammond Police Department is, has already implemented and will continue to implement to make sure that, like I said, relationships with, with the HPD and residents are smooth. And then the last thing that I want to report out on is that through a relationship with Home Depot and resident, Amy Radelak from over in Hessville, we were able to get three water heaters donated to residents from my district. And so right now, we are holding an opportunity for residents to share with us if their hot water heaters were damaged during the, the most recent flood at the end of, at the end of May. And if they were, and if they also had an inspection done by the Hammond Sanitary District, then they're going to be included in this drawing for one of these three water heaters that'll also include free installation done by one of the local plumber, plumbing unions. And so once we have more information about who those are going to, I'll be able to share that at the next council meeting, I hope. But like I said, we have three hot water heaters that are ready to be donated and installed. So if you are resident in Washington, this out of the third district whose water heater was damaged last month, please reach out to me so we can get you on this list. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Is there any other unfinished business? Just, there's a note, question to all the colleagues that we continue. You guys comfortable with continuing, coming to the chambers? Those that want to, and so I know it's a little bit of a logistic thing, but those that want to participate by Zoom, we're all good with this? Is there any other unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, is there anybody on Zoom that I see three or four different names that wishes to speak during public expression? Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak during public expression? Do we see anybody? Chris?
Can you just ask anybody on Zoom that wants to speak, use the software to raise your hand? Or you can unmute yourself now.
Anyone wishing to speak? On public expression, chief charge. Does anybody? All good? Yeah, you got to come up to the podium there and state your name. Just state your name and you got three minutes.
Okay, my name is Gabriella Hill. I live actually in your district, Councilman President. And I'm here. And I'm here because of a storm that came through on June tenth, the morning of June tenth. Um, so on June tenth, there was a tree that fell on my car. And it was a tree that is in front of my neighbor's house. So I went over to her house. Her name is Eva Del Toro. And I believe that she had had communications with you personally about the tree. So I went over there to see what was going on, smashed my car. And she told me that several months ago, she had informed the city that the tree was decaying. The tree is on city property on that easement in front of the house. The tree was decaying and it needed to get removed. Um, I believe that she spoke to me directly about it. And then several months after that, they were installing the lights, um, down on our street. They're very beautiful. And they had several trees marked for removal. Again, my neighbor called and said, this tree is a problem, it's dangerous. And this tree be marked as a rule as well. And the councilman told her that the tree service that was being used in tandem with the light installation was too expensive and that the city would send out its own people to take the tree down. Several months later, June ninth, a Tuesday, my neighbor called again to say, this tree is still here. The lights have been installed for quite a while now. The very next day, it fell on my car. She spoke to you on June ninth. So I have actually been emailing you and calling you almost every day since June tenth. Um, with no answer or reply. So that's why I showed up here tonight. I don't know the correct face to bring this issue, but I just have been having a lot of trouble getting into contact with somebody who can help me with this issue.
I'll speak the afternoon.
Okay, great. Much appreciated.
Is there anyone else? I want to take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.